All right, it's 7:00 PM. Call the council meeting to order. The records show that all council members are present except for Councilmember Quoc, who has an excused absence. So we don't need item three on the agenda. We're at item four, could I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda. A second?
Moved by Vice Mayor Dawson, seconded by Councilmember Candell. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's four zero. Onto the pledge of allegiance. Now, after the pledge, please remain standing to observe a moment of silence in memory of those who died 22 years ago. David Clark has volunteered to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so please stand. David, if you could come to the podium. Use the microphone.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain still. Onto item six, public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Each person would have three minutes to address the council. Is there anyone in the room who would like to address the council? Do we have speaker slips?
Mayor Andry, I do have a speaker slip from David Clark.
Mr. Clark.
I'm David Clark. As you know, I sent this article to each of you and for the audience, it's an article that was in the New York Times, I think, two weeks ago, titled "This is Public Housing, Just Don't Call It That." But, and there's a lot in here. If you've read it, great. If you haven't had a chance to read it, I would encourage you to do that. I wanted to throw out one caveat. The way this thing works, what's in it, the way what's illustrated in here works, requires bond financing. And I know that that's a stumbling block. But it seems to me there may be a way or two around that. So don't get to the part where it says, "We raised, we put $100 million in funding, and it was bond financing," and just stop. Because I think there's more to the article than than just that. Anyway, I committed to your reading.
Thank you. Are there questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you. City Clerk Robbins, are there any other?
Mayor Andry, I have no additional speaker slips. If anyone watching us via Zoom would like to raise their hand and speak, now is the time to do so. I have no hands raised, Mayor Andry.
Okay, thank you. We're on to item seven A, a highlight of our meetings once a month. And that's hearing from Mary McCosker, President of the Lafayette Historical Society, on an aspect of Lafayette history as part of our celebration of 175-plus years of Lafayette history. Mary, the floor is yours.
Okay, so tonight I'm going to regale you with tales of the schools that have been in Lafayette. The first school was built in the early 1850s by Benjamin Shreve, the first school teacher. Shreve had come to California during the gold rush, but apparently did not strike it rich and was heading back to San Francisco to return to the Midwest when he came through this small community. Elin Brown hired him to be the first teacher. The school was located on Golden Gateway between First and Second Streets. This photo was probably taken in the 1860s at a community dance party. I'm not sure the school was being used. It sure has a lot of broken windows. Built in 1871, this building, another one-room schoolhouse, was located on today's Maraga Road. Jenny Bickerstaff is on the far right, wearing an apron. She graduated from this school in 1888. Jenny was born in Pennsylvania in 1872 and came to California as a child of seven. She taught school in Contra Costa County from 1892 until she retired in 1936. Her first job was with the Maraga School District, and she also taught at the Pacheco School. Her longest tenure was 21 years with the Walnut Creek School District. She rode her horse, Topsy, to school. Teacher Jenny Bickerstaff and Principal Sophie Tucker stand on the steps of the Third Lafayette School. Jenny was a teacher here from 1889 to 1902. This school is now a part of the Lafayette United Methodist Church. The second schoolhouse can be seen at the rear. James Bickerstaff was born in Ireland in 1826 and came to California in 1868. He became a naturalized citizen in 1870. He married Delilah Boyer in Pennsylvania, and Jenny was born in 1872. A son, Charlie, who was born in 1877, died the following year. In 1879, the family moved from Pennsylvania to Lafayette and bought a small farm from Elin Brown, bordering on what is now Doing Avenue, where they had a barn, a well, and a windmill, a team of horses and a wagon, a cow, and Jenny's riding horse, Topsy. Jenny helped her father plant the gardens around the house, which included several redwood trees. After Jenny's death in 1966, the family home was razed and a business was built on the property. Today, Diablo Foods occupies the site of the Bickerstaff home, and one of Jenny's redwood trees remains to remind us of Miss Jenny and her services to Lafayette. Lafayette Elementary School was opened in 1927 as the school-aged population in the town had grown. The first teacher principal was W.B. Bill Ellis from 1932 to 1947. He was Lafayette School's principal and district superintendent from 1947 to 1950. He became the district's full-time superintendent in 1950 until he retired in 1962. Part of the school was demolished in 1997, and new classrooms were built, as well as a multipurpose room and library. Other classrooms were remodeled, and additional classrooms have been added in the past few years. Valacito School opened in 1949 and was closed in 1983. The name of the school means Little Valley, as the site was located between the nearby hills. When the school was closed, the students from Valacito were sent to Happy Valley or Lafayette School. The school and property were sold to Bentley School in 1995, and it's now a private high school. Montecito School also opened in 1949. The name means Little Mountain, as the school was built on the eastern end of Lafayette near some hills. The school was closed in 1979 and was later sold to the Mayor's School. After the school was closed, students from this area attended Spring Hill and Burton Valley Schools. Stanley School opened in 1953. It was named after Matthew Howard Stanley, who moved to Lafayette in 1925 and owned a drugstore on Mount Diablo Boulevard. He was elected to the Lafayette School Board in the late 1920s. Over the next 25 years, he helped oversee the school system's growth from a single three-room schoolhouse with 150 pupils to three schools with 1,800 students. In the 1930s, Lafayette residents began forming a high school district to include Lafayette, Arinda, Maraga, and Walnut Creek. Mr. Stanley was voted to the Board of Trustees for the new Akalani's High School District in 1938. By 1956, when Mr. Stanley left the school board, Las Lomas and Meramani were up and running. In addition to his contribution to local schools, he was also on the board of the Fire District, helped to form the Contra Costa County Sanitary District, was on the planning committee for the construction of the Caldecott Tunnel, on the committee to establish the Lafayette Library, and worked with the Boy Scouts, the Lions Club, and the American Legion. After a year-long renovation during the 1992-93 school year, sixth graders began attending Stanley Intermediate, along with seventh and eighth graders. The four elementary schools became K through five. Burton School opened in 1954 and was closed in 1979. The school was located on St. Mary's Road and was named after the Burton family, who farmed the property in this part of Lafayette. The property was sold to the city in 1983 and became the Lafayette Community Center. Spring Hill School opened in 1955. The school was demolished, except for the multipurpose room, in 1997 and completely rebuilt by 1999. Classes were housed in portable buildings until the construction was completed. The name Spring Hill may have come from the geography of the area, which included hills and springs. Happy Valley School was opened in 1956 and is still in use today. It was remodeled in the 1990s, and new classrooms have been added several times between now and then. The name Happy Valley was first mentioned in 1887, but it's unknown why this name was chosen for this area and thus for this school. Fairview Middle School opened in 1958 as Lafayette's second intermediate school with seventh and eighth grades. It shared a campus with Marywood Elementary School. In 1978, the school board voted to consolidate three elementary schools and two intermediate schools due to declining enrollment and less school funding from the state of California. In 1979, it became Burton Valley Elementary School when students from Montecito, Burton, and Marywood were moved to the campus. The seventh and eighth grade students from Fairview were moved to Stanley Intermediate School. Marywood Elementary School shared a campus with Fairview and was opened in 1959. In 1979, the elementary school was closed, and the entire site became Burton Valley Elementary School. Ellis School opened in January of 1963 and was closed in 1976. It was located on the east side of Pleasant Hill Road off of Quant Road. When it was opened, it housed 150 kindergarten through fifth-grade students. After the school was closed, the land was sold to a private developer who built homes on the site. The school was named for Bill Ellis, longtime teacher, principal, and superintendent of schools. At first, Mr. Ellis did not want a school named after him, so other names were suggested. Sir Francis Drake School, Quant School, Shreve School, after Benjamin Shreve, first school teacher. Ellis School was eventually used as the name. In 1954, the school district's enrollment was 2,824. By 1959, it had grown to 4,348. In the 1970s, schools were closed due to declining enrollment. At one time, the district supported 10 schools. Today, there are only five schools, plus Akalani's High School, and the elementary enrollment is about 3,200 students. On September 10, 1940, Akalani's High School opened with a flag-raising ceremony. There were 406 students enrolled the first fall. For several years after its completion, the school was used as an example of the most advanced school design at national architectural conventions and in architectural magazines. 67 seniors graduated in June of 1941. Prior to its opening, students from the La Miranda and Walnut Creek areas rode the Sacramento Northern Train and attended Mount Diablo High School in Concord. So, hope you've been taking notes, because there's going to be a quiz pretty soon. Anyway, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions?
No, I mean, I do have a question, but actually a comment. I do want to thank you, Mary, for doing that. And I know that both of us have a special place in art for our schools. And I was curious, when you were rattling off Bill Ellis's volunteer committee service. So I did actually Google, and he was a citizen of the year, so. What, I think the third one. But anyway, I just was like, well, wait a minute, he did everything here. But thank you so much.
Well, I have to say, my wife moved here in a year I'm not allowed to mention. But she went to four schools, all of which are now closed or repurposed. But the one you didn't mention was Del Valle. I don't know if you count that with. Okay, well, Lafayette kids went there, but anyway, yeah, that was. Yeah, right. I'll tell her that. All right, thanks again. Oh, is anyone in the public have a question or a comment? Mary? Just going to see if there's any public comments or questions for you.
Mayor Andry and council, I have no speaker slips, but I do have a hand raised. It's two, one, Cheryl McDonald. So she is being allowed to speak, Cheryl?
That was a wonderful presentation. I loved hearing about all the schools and experiencing times that I grew up here. I just wondered if Mary knew very much about nursery schools and the orientation of what was called Humpty Dumpty College, which is now known as the Firehouse. She knew the beginnings of the nursery school called Humpty Dumpty College. That's it, thank you. And it was wonderful presentation, what fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, thank you. We'll look forward to October 10.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to item.
I have one other hand raised. It's Ravi, ready?
You see, ready for a later item?
Oh, no, no. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, I just wanted to say I really appreciated the Historical Society's presentation. Wonderfully done, and we're all very proud of their work. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're on to item seven B. Ms. Robinson, I'll get an update on the ARPA efforts and the new Experience Lafayette webpage.
Okay. Okay, so I am here to report on one of the projects that was approved as part of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And this was a project to put together a website that would function as a business district directory for stores and services. So we are giving you a preview tonight. So the website is in the process of being launched. We have sort of a launch plan that will take place right around the Art and Wine Festival. So we're going to be promoting that pretty heavily at our booth. We have flyers. We have some gift cards that we're going to be giving away if people sign up to the social media for this site. So I thought I would just take you through quickly what the site is. It's basically up and running. We're calling this a soft launch. So the site is experiencelafayetteca.org. And you can see on the front page, we have a really great video of all the wonderful things that we have in Lafayette. Inside, there is the same video. It does have some sound, but on the homepage, we launch it without sound. So you can see we've got basically three, three different sections. We have places to eat and drink, places to shop, and services. And I'm going to, I'm going to go through those each really quickly. So for eat and drink, when you go to that section, here we go. We've got a bunch of categories. So basically, these are the restaurants in Lafayette. You can look, and we have different categories. For example, date night or dog friendly. For shopping, you put, you go to the shopping tab. Again, you can filter by what you want. You know, you could do food and grocery pharmacy and so on. If you were to do apparel and accessories, for example, you could see. So you can look there. Under services, again, very similar, just the different services that are within Lafayette can be filtered by the particular service. And then the last tab are things to do. So there are quite a few things under here. There is the ability to look for places to have venue, to look for places to have a get-together. So this highlights all of the places within Lafayette that you can rent, where you can shop for party services, where you can buy things to have your parties. So that's all geared towards bringing people into Lafayette under arts and culture. Again, we've just broken down all the fun things. There's theaters, concerts, we highlight the library, we talk about the art. There's a different, I guess, the art page here would take you towards, it links back to our website, the art walks. There are outdoor activities. So clearly, we highlight our trails. We highlight bicycle trails, cycling stores, the reservoir. And then Relax and Stay, these are different spas. This is the, obviously, the hotel spa services that come up. So this really is a pretty full-service website to get people to come and experience all of the great food and shops and services within Lafayette. This has been worked on for a very long time, but we think it's come together very well. We're very excited to launch it. We think it's going to make people really want to come to Lafayette. And yeah, so I encourage you to go and explore it in more detail. There are a lot of things on this website that make Lafayette great. So we're very pleased, I think, with how it came out.
All right, well, thank you very much for all your work on it. And thanks to Suzanne, to Thomas Myers, to Councilmember Dawson, who were the main people who made this happen, along with our consultants, Radiant. So are there questions for Tracy?
Yeah, I agree, looks terrific. Can't wait to see this, it really looks great. The outreach to the businesses, how was, they're not just chamber businesses, they're outside. What was the outreach?
We reached out on a number of channels to try to get every single business that we could. So no, it is not just chamber businesses. We wanted it to be more broad. And we looked at a lot of things. We reached out to where we had email addresses. We went and looked ourselves, for example, to reach out to businesses that say didn't respond so that we could populate this and make it useful. And we're going to continue to do that, to make it as robust as we possibly can.
Sounds great, thank you.
And I didn't mention, however, there are, for example, the E-card program. If businesses are a member of the E-card program, you'll see here, for example, clocks, et cetera. If you can see, there's a little E right here. And then I think we are planning on also doing, reviving that E-card with a little bit of an added boost. I think we decided 50%, right? So buy one, get one at 50%. So if you buy a $100 gift card, you get a $50 for free gift card. So we're launching that program basically simultaneously with when we do a big push in advertising for this, to get people very interested. So we have a lot of collateral material and things to be handed out at the Art and Wine, which is a perfect opportunity to get lots of people excited about other parts of Lafayette.
I just wanted to mention, thank you, Tracy, for that. And you mentioned this before, but a big part of this project was dupe-fold, was to make sure we can speak to the businesses in town. Because after the pandemic, we realized, oh, we need an avenue to talk to more of them. And so definitely, this was a conduit to, to create our, not only directory for residents and visitors to use, but also for us to speak to our business community and support them. So it had a dupe-fold purpose, and I'm really excited about it, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Are there any public questions or comments? If anyone would like to say anything here, just raise your hand. You can fill out a speaker slip later if you haven't filled one out.
Anybody in the room? I have no hands raised in the Zoom audience, so we have no speakers, Mayor Andry.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Garringer.
So just a comment, I know the mayor left himself out of the thank yous, but. Well, there might be a reason, but I wanted to point out that your very well-written message from the mayor in Grete talked about connecting and talked about this. And so. talked about connecting and talked about this. And so a little teaser ahead of that outreach. So thank you.
All right. And once again, I want to say our, our consultant, Radiant, did a really good job. So okay. All right. Thank you, Tracy.
Mayor Endury, if you would indulge me, we did have another speaker who had wanted to speak about Mary's presentation. Libby Henry said she wanted to congratulate her on her fine presentation and also add that Laurel Stanley of Lafayette is M. H. Stanley's daughter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on to the consent calendar. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, would any member of the public like to request that the council remove an item from the consent calendar? I see no one in here. No one online. All right, can I have a motion for adoption of the consent calendar?
Move adoption of the consent calendar? A second?
Okay, move by Councilmember Garringer, seconded by Councilmember Candell. All in favor, say aye. It's a four O unanimous. Okay, we're on to item 11A, Public Hearings, Appeal of Planning Commission's Approval. Sure, go ahead.
So I do want to disclose that I'm going to recuse myself from this hearing. I have a professional relationship with one of the presenters in the room on two different projects right now. So it seems very in a professional manner. I, it's not a legal interpretation. I do not have to recuse myself legally, but I think professionally, I do need to recuse myself. So have a good hearing. I'll be out in the hall.
We'll find you. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let me just, I'm gonna give just a brief summary of where we are before I turn it over to you, Richard, for the staff report. Just so everyone is aware, the applicant received a Phase One approval for this project in 2020. The approval was appealed to the City Council in 2020. The council heard the appeal de novo and approved the project and certified the final EIR for the project. The council's approval of the Phase One Hillside Development Permit expired on September 30th, 2021. Earlier this year, the applicant applied to reapprove the entitlements. In April, the Planning Commission approved the project. The approval has again been appealed to the City Council. Since the appeal was filed, the city has had prepared an addendum to the final EIR. So tonight, the council will hear the appeal de novo. And Richard, I want to confirm before we get into it, that number one, the project before the council now is the same as the project before the council in 2020. Thank you. And second, that the resolution before the council now, including the conditions of approval, is the same as the resolution approved by the council in 2020, with the sole exception that the council is now being asked to certify the addendum to the EIR.
That is correct.
Thank you. So we will proceed. We'll hear first from our consultants, from staff. Then the applicant will have up to 10 minutes to address the council. And the this is a de novo hearing, and the applicant has the burden to demonstrate consistency with the required findings. But the applicant should be aware that the council has reviewed all the materials, so there is no need to repeat what is in the materials. The appellant will then have up to 10 minutes. The appellant should use its time to demonstrate to the council, first, what is different from 2020, when the council heard the same matter and approved it, and second, what the council got wrong in 2020. Okay, then they will open it for public comments. Members of the public will have up to three minutes each. We'll come back for, for an appellate rebuttal for up to five minutes, and then the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal, and then we'll bring it back to the council. So that's the schedule we'll follow. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Richard.
Well, you did such a good job of explaining the project. I'm not sure how much more I can add. Okay, this is appeal of the Planning Commission decision, HDPO 5-23 for the Reedy Project at 3933 Quail Ridge Drive. The public, it's a public hearing to review the appeal by Joseph and Sylvia Garofalo to the April 3rd, 2023 Planning Commission Approval, which included the following entitlements: Phase One Hillside Developments, Siting and Massing, exception for development within a Class Two Ridgeline setback, design review for height exceeding 17 feet, grading to exceed 200 cubic yards, and the removal of seven trees. The project site is located at the, towards the end of Quail Ridge Road, is located in the northwestern quadrant of the city. 3933 Quail Ridge Road is located on a private road that extends from the terminus of the existing public road. As you can see in the site plan, on the site plan, a large portion of this one acre site consists of a landslide that occurred in 1997, which is approximately this area right here in gray. The area in green is the location of the ridgeline set, setback. The applicant is proposing to locate the house on the northeast corner of the site on relatively stable ground. The project has been appealed to the City Council before, when it was originally approved by the Planning Commission in July of 2020. The Reedies were not able to acquire the Phase Two Hillside Development Permit prior to the original entitlements expiring and had to restart the process. The project has not changed since the original approval. Garofalo's appealed the decision to the Planning Commission based on four previously raised issues that the commission, that the City Council has already ruled on, and two new issues. These are items, are the items to be considered for this appeal, focus on the IR failing to adequately address potential hazards from landsides, the project being unable to comply with the mandatory C3 Stormwater Management and Mitigation Measures, GEO 2A, the lack of an appropriate enforcement mechanism for road damage, the EIR not addressing the impacts to existing homes in the event of a slide. These two next ones are new issues that were raised. The Planning Commission relying on materially outdated materials and concerns about the stability of the ground, opposition to granting of entitlements, verification that the trees are on the applicant's property, and the request for a completion and insurance bond for Quail Road. I'm going to go through these six items in greater detail. Addressing the EIR, the written appeal states the EIR failed to adequately address potential hazards from landslides. This was previously reviewed by the City Council on September 14th, 2020, and the council determined the Planning Commission and EIR were found to have addressed these concerns. Second, the project will be unable to comply with the mandatory C3 Stormwater Management and Mitigation Measures, GEO 2A. This was previously reviewed by the City Council, and ongoing and meet, or ongoing monitoring and maintenance are covered in Condition of Approval 18. Additionally, a lack of an appropriate enforcement mechanism for road damage. This was also reviewed by the City Council previously. The project is proposed on a private road, and the city does not have the duty or the authority to enforce conditions in the repair of a private road. The IR also, it was argued, the IR also does not address the impacts of existing homes in the event of a slide. The City Council has previously reviewed this, and the EIR mitigating measures, GEO 1 and GEO 3, address these concerns. And I should state that all these are detailed in the staff report. Additionally, the, the appellant said that the Planning Commission relied on material outdated materials. And you, due to this appeal, the city requested an addendum be produced to the final EIR to verify that all the underlying conditions that were in the original EIR were still relevant. And it was discovered that no impacts to the underlying conditions of the final EIR were, EIR were discovered. As part of this addendum, the applicant produced a geotechnical report that was reviewed by engineers that were hired by the city for, for a peer review. There's also concerns about the stability of the ground, opposition to granting of entitlements, ver- verification the trees were on the applicant's property, and the request for a completion and insurance bond for Quail Road. The slope stability and road repairs had been, have been previously covered. The final EIR stated that there would be less than a significant impact to surrounding properties. And staff reviewed all available materials, aerial photographs, and conducted a site visit, and all the trees appear to be on the applicant's property. To my best knowledge, we have received no public comment on this application. And staff recommends the adoption of Resolution 2023-31 certifying the addendum to the EIR and approving this project, subject to the conditions and the included mitigating measures. Thank you. That ends my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions? All right, then we'll give the applicant 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes. Would the applicant like to use the, the time?
Richard, is the applicant in the audience or in our Zoom audience?
The applicant is in the Zoom audience.
And his name is? I've got three consultant names here, but I, I don't know who presenting.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Reedy would be the last name. They talked during the
Ravi Reedy? Ready?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. We will allow him to speak. You need to unmute yourself?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. And City Clerk Robbins, do we have a timer?
I'm actually not speaking on behalf of the applicant. Another family member, Nash Reddy, should be there. And our engineer, Alan Crop, I'm just actually in the audience right now.
Okay, are you? Okay, so this is, this is the time for the applicant to address the council if you wish to do so.
Okay, I apologize to the council, but I'm not there physically present. Do you see Alan Crop, our engineer, in the audience?
I believe so. So, okay, we'll, we'll come back to you. Thank you.
Yes, so my Nash Reddy should be speaking on behalf of the applicant, and Alan Crop, our engineer, will as well. Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I'm available to speak. Thank you.
Philippe in the back, could you remove Ravi and then reset the timer for 10 minutes for the speaker at the podium? Thank you.
My name's Alan Crop. I'm the Geotechnical Consultant on behalf of the applicant. And my understanding was I was simply going to be here to answer questions that were raised as opposed to make a presentation, because it was our sense that the topic had already been pretty well-covered. And then Nash Reddy is here as well as a member of the Reddy family. Maybe Nash, you want to say?
Yeah, I'm Nash Reddy. I'm not here to make any presentation. I'm just here to have the geotechnical engineer answer any questions you have to have the project approved.
Okay, fair enough. Are there any questions at this point? No. Okay, so you'll have a chance, if you hear something from the appellant, you'll have a chance to come back on rebuttal.
That sounds fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, the appellant is Mr. Garofalo. Ms. Garofalo.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Garofalo, 3954 Quail Ridge Road.
We ask you to speak into the microphone and speak up.
Yes, can you, Mina?
Yes, thank you.
3954 Quail Ridge Road. Basically, we just, I just, I'm just here to preserve our objections. I want to reiterate all our previous objections and also add a new one because of due process. We actually were corresponding with Mr. Miedon about the addendum, and we were provided with it in July, so I do appreciate that. However, when I went today to the website to print the agenda, I found out Appendix A and B that were never provided to us. So we don't have right now a response to any of those items. Another issue that I wanted to, to point out is Quail Ridge Road is a private road. We maintain the road. Right now, we have making repairs because the road has been, you know, sliding and, you know, degrading. So the, I believe it was 12 neighbors that have the Eastman on the road, we have made like over $50,000 in payment. We have requested Mr. Reddy to pay his portion because we split it evenly on all the roads. And after several requests, we haven't received his payment. So that creates a little concern whether he's going to actually take care of the road if this, if the project go forward. That's the need of the insurance bond, because we have spent the money on it, we maintain it, and I don't want like, you know, heavy trucks or anything to damage the road anymore. There's like three big patches that we have fixed. One right in front of the proposed project, one in front of my house, and one on the other side of the landslide. So that's pretty much about it. Finally, I just, I would like to generally note that all the experts have agreed that this is an active landslide, and it is still moving. And if, I mean, I've lived there for over 10 years, and you do see the, this line moving downhill. And whether the, the black tarp that we save does not have any structural, I guess, function of it, it, it was my understanding that was a waterproof tarp that was supposed to, because we want to prevent water to go into the road. But, you know, I'm not an expert. I did not have a time to engage an expert because I just found out this today. But just wanted to raise my objections here, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Before we get to questions, if we have any, can I ask the city attorney? I discovered that also that Appendix A and B were not on the website. They were provided to council members today and posted to the website. What impact would that have on our ability to act tonight?
Can I confirm with our planner whether the appellant did receive Appendixes A and B previous today, or did everyone receive it today?
I'm not sure is the answer. I, I thought all the information had been sent to
I'm not sure. I thought all the information had been sent over, but I would need to check my emails to verify that it, it had.
Actually, could you return to the podium? Just then we can record your comments. But
So we were corresponding regarding the scheduling of this hearing, and we were provided with addendum. And I can confirm that we did not receive Appendix A and B.
If you could just wait there a second.
I would like to hear, maybe we could take, I don't know if you have other questions for staff or members of the public, but I would like the planner to confirm whether, through his email, whether it was sent or not previously.
So we can come back to that.
Yeah, we can come back to that.
Are there questions for the appellant? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we'll open it for public comments. Do we have any speaker slips in the room?
We have no speaker slips in the room, Mayor Endury, and I have no hands raised from our Zoom audience.
Okay, did Mr. Reddy want to come back?
Mr. Reddy, if you want to come back, you would need to raise your hand so I could allow you to speak, or?
See if he's going to speak.
Okay.
I think what the lady, the madam was mentioning about the road maintenance.
Oh, no, we'll, we'll come, we'll wait. Oh, no, we'll we'll come, we'll wait. You'll have a rebuttal time.
No hands raised, no speaker slips.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. It's now appellant rebuttal. I'm going to assume, Mr. Garofalo, that you have, since there was no public comment, that there's nothing to rebut. All right. And so now it's the applicant's turn to rebut anything that you've heard. If you want to, you have up to five minutes to address the council.
Yeah, it's basically we've been maintaining the property according to what the city has required. Having, you know, for fire regulations, you know, fire abatement and as far as the what the lady was mentioning, it's just a slurry coat that they've been applying. And you know, that doesn't require that the city doesn't require us to do that. We're doing whatever the city and the county is requiring us to do.
Yep.
And once we build the house, you know, then we'll worry about it.
Okay, do you have any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we'll bring it back to the council. We. Okay. All right, so we, in order to adopt the resolution, we need to be able to make the findings again that, and I say again, because you, Councilmember Gerringer, heard this before in two thousand. But we need to twenty twenty, sorry. Okay, well, actually, maybe the best thing to do is address the appellant's new arguments. And I think that staff has has handled those. I really appreciate the staff obtaining an addendum to the E I R because I think that makes it a lot clearer. It confirms that there's been really no no change to what's been the basis for the council's decision earlier. So thank you for that. And then, you know, I'm in agreement with the responses to the other concerns raised by by neighbors. I don't think they justify not approving this project, but Councilmember Gerringer.
Now, first of all, I just want to thank you, Mayor, for laying out as and now I'm forgetting your first name, but our contract planner stated you laid out the question and, you know, what was before us. I do think that staff was very thorough and I think that going through and having the experts review the findings and the plans from before were very thorough. And so I'm comfortable making the findings. And I see that our city attorney, though, is finding out if procedurally we can take action this evening.
You are correct, Councilmember Gerringer. It appears that the appendices were not given to the appellant. So my suggestion is, and I'll confirm with Rick if this timing works, is my suggestion, we do continue the public hearing to maybe two weeks. They are now been provided and then the council can then take final action at that meeting.
Okay, would you suggest we do continue discussion of this or that we wait until the next meeting?
If you have any questions that you may have or any additional information that you may have and you may not, you could bring that forward now such that staff would have time to be able to address that when we come back. But if there is no additional information you're seeking to have and we're just waiting the two weeks, then I think we can.
Okay, no, I, as I said, I think staff, I think our consultant did a great job on this and presenting the information. The only little nitpick I would make, I noticed that the you were ready to go in July with the resolution. So the the resolution refers to the staff report dated in July, so that needs to be updated to now be September twenty-sixth.
Thank you. I kept trying to remember having reviewed it and and made a decision on it. So thank you for pointing that out as well.
Okay, so can we have a motion to continue this item to, is it twenty-fifth, it's the twenty-sixth, right?
So move.
Meeting on a Tuesday?
Yeah, yes, the twenty-sixth.
Okay, to Tuesday, September twenty-sixth.
Second.
Okay, moved by Council Vice Mayor Dawson, seconded by Councilmember Gerringer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous three oh two. Continue this to September twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, thank you all. Okay.
We'll be bringing Councilmember Candell back into the meeting room.
Okay. Okay, we're on to item thirteen eight, Councilmember Reports on Activities and Items that Councilmember wishes to place on a future agenda. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Gerringer.
I don't. I don't actually have a lot of reports, but I did want to. I had mentioned it previously that having it while recognizing it may not be completely within our jurisdiction, but having a discussion on insurance rates, I know that there's a lot of discussion. I know the efforts at the state level didn't proceed. There wasn't agreement reached on that. And so just want to keep raising it up that if we could have updates on sort of what as cities we could do to advocate or get a report out on it from the insurance commissioner. I think there's something coming up from Commissioner Lada and his office, but just want to make sure that we're following up.
Okay, and the.
Or getting educated, I guess.
These are homeowners insurance.
Correct, thank you.
The insurance rates the city is paying now.
No homeowners, because I mean, every, I'm sure that we all get calls or read about folks who are, well, just the whole, you know, state, the way that it's going. And so wanted to, when it's appropriate, bring that forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, has it been slow this summer?
I mean, if you want, no.
Actually, I do. I just want to make sure we're tracking P G D coming back. I know we requested them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll just give another shout out to the ARPA team and to Public Works for the the our longest murals on either side of Lafayette Circle in front of Tutus and the Public House. I think they look great. Just oh, they're, yeah.
They do. Actually, we I had brunch yesterday at Tutus and the person that I was dining with and I both commented on how nice they look. So thank you.
I just want to add to that. It's another example of how the ARPA funds are do a fold. So there's a safety improvement and a downtown vibrancy piece to that.
Yep. All right, city manager's update.
I do have updates for you. From the police department, we were short one motor officer. Officer Paradis has passed motor school and now we have two motor officers on duty to help with the Slow Down Lafayette campaign. And the PD is getting ready for the Art and Wine Festival, working with the chamber. From recreation, the fall programs are going well. And a special shout out to the La Miranda School Bus Program because they, the buses are providing four hundred and fifty-two individual trips a week. And average of ninety kids a day take the bus from the school to the aftercare programs. It's really, it's been a tremendous partnership and less cars on the road. The staff is initiating public engagement for the safety improvements and pathway projects around Stanley Middle School. And we expect to launch a project website on the city's webpage within the upcoming week. At this point, the webpage will provide general information about the scope of the project, a high-level schedule, and also information about public open house, which is expected to be in the fall. And this is the planning and design of the safety improvements, that the funding is not for construction. But the scope of work does include the safety drop-off improvements on Saint Mary's Road as well. Topper, Saint Mary's and School Street are the areas which will be under consideration. There, we have already hired the consultant team, so they're ready to go. From planning the safety element was, as you know, you recently adopted it, we filed the necessary sequel paperwork with the county and submitted the resolution to the State Department of Emergency Services. What does that mean? We are now eligible for additional FEMA funding in case of an emergency. And finally, just an update. I know the council is aware that there was a a house fire, I would say, a a structure fire on north of Deer Hill Road last evening. Our own Chief McAllister responded and has sent an update. It was put out fairly quickly. The house itself was not damaged, but there's a lot of smoke damage, not physically damaged, but there was smoke. Unfortunately, the outhouses were used to raise birds and a number of birds perished in the fire. There was an engine that was on standby to make sure that there was no the fire was rekindled. There was a small fire in the morning, but they were there to put it out. So all is well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Yes, did they? Did they find out what caused spark the fire?
No, I have not yet found that out.
Okay, I might just mention that on my way to Quell Ridge to do the site visit this afternoon, I passed two police officers, that one motorcycle unit, one other vehicle in what I'll refer to as observational positions, watching stop signs and other things. So they're on the road now, the Slow Down Campaign, moving into the enforcement mode, so.
And finally, just wanted to give the council an update on the land acknowledgement task force that was scheduled. Their deadline was November, but they're done. They've completed their work and they will be presenting their findings and recommendations on October the tenth.
Great. And did you want to talk about the Art and Wine Booth?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, let's, yeah, is there any public comment on item thirteen B one? Anyone on online?
No speaker slips and no hands raised, Mayor Endury.
Okay, thank you. Then we're on to thirteen B two.
Oh, that's, I am so sorry. I was looking at the schedule. Councilmember Kwak is not here this evening, but did send an email not too long ago saying that he would be, I'm just letting you know, his request here Sunday from twelve-thirty to three and or three to five-thirty P M. That's his, those are the two slots.
Are we just jumping in? I had sent it, oh.
Well, you anticipate that we'll volunteer for the slots now? Would that be probably the quickest? Okay.
I, well, I had just sent an email and I have some flexibility, but Saturday morning, the first shift, and then would love to join Councilmember Kwak at the twelve-thirty to three on Sunday. And then can arm wrestle or negotiate if that's.
Okay. Councilmember Candell?
I unfortunately am at a wedding on Saturday in Napa. So the earliest I can get back is plus things early on Sunday is I can only do the last two shifts on Sunday.
Okay.
So three-thirty to five-thirty in the clothes. I can do both those.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
No, that's good.
Sounds like we've got Sunday kind of covered.
Not the first.
Yeah, I could do the first shift on Sunday. I'll be out of town actually on Saturday.
So I'm looking at my chart correctly of the six spots on Saturday. We have one filled now. All right, so I'll I'll just ask is, well, doesn't work, doesn't work. And
Oops. Part of the twelve-thirty to three, we have a tradition of a whole group of us who have the Saturday afternoon spot as participating in the Art and Wine Festival, but can do part of that twelve-thirty to three. Because it is very fun being at the booth, so.
Okay, well.
Oh, and the mayor has to be there because there's this one couple who they come every year. They started with Mayor Candell and they want their picture taken with the mayor.
Okay, and exactly what time did they? Okay, no, I can be there all day Saturday.
And Mia, I'd be there as well.
Okay.
And if my plans change and I come back earlier, I'll be glad to come down.
Okay.
I'll send this out to everyone and staff members will be signing up as well to join you.
Okay, and we're also going to have Public Art Committee people in the booth because they're going to be explaining the mural program. Do we have other commissions or committees or task forces that are going to be?
Not that I'm aware of. I know that emergency preparedness is looking at its own booth.
Right. Okay, all right, great. Okay, then we're on to, well, I assume nobody's, there's no public comment on that. Then we're on to item thirteen C, the Design Review Commission. So Councilmember Candell.
Yeah, I am very pleased that we had one applicant for our last slot on design review and please that Vice Mayor Dawson was not there at the interview, but we had a really nice conversation afterwards about this particular candidate. The particular candidate is Richard Stanton. And, oh, that's right, you were there. That's right. And he is a, not only a recently retired architect from his real job at L B L as a department head of the infrastructure projects. It's even more relevant that he's been thirty years on Pleasant Hills, equivalent to our D R C. So he is coming in as super senior and very, very happy that we can recommend to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty and recommend Richard Stanton to the Design Review Commission.
Okay, and that's a motion? Okay, are there are there questions for Councilmember Candell or Vice Mayor Dawson?
No.
All right, is there any public comment?
I see no public comment at this time, Mayor Endury.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Candell, seconded by
A second.
Dawson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous four zero and that's very good news. Okay, we're on to D. The Creeks Committee. And we interviewed two very strong candidates. We had a discussion and have decided to recommend Christine Lee for the position. So I will move that we adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-one, pointing Christine Lee to the Creeks Committee.
I was enthusiastically second that.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none here.
No public comments noted.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous four oh. So Christine Lee is appointed to the Creeks Committee, another strong member of of our very strong Creeks Committee. Okay, item E, the Senior Services Commission, and this is a vacancy that's because of item fourteen C below, but we'll we'll go ahead with this appointment and I'll ask Councilmember Gerringer to make the report.
So yes, we are going to be efficient this evening. We'll accept, I believe, Erin Partridge's resignation and but right now we will be asking that the council approves Stephanie Carrasco. When we interviewed previously before knowing When we interviewed um, previously before knowing about Erin's um, vacancy, there were um, several very strong candidates, um, including someone who was being reappointed as part of the, you know, our rotation or system that we have. Um, and Stephanie interviewed at that time and um, the mayor and I uh, both had the interview, the privilege of interviewing, and so we would like to um, appoint Stephanie. She has been reached out to and is still interested in uh, serving.
Okay, are there any questions or the council members? Nope. Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment at this time.
Okay.
So I'll move, yes, thank you.
And I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous four zero, so Stephanie Carrasco is appointed to the Senior Services Commission. We're on to item fourteen A. This is um, request for proclamation recognizing Eden Housing fifty-fifth anniversary. The draft of the resolution is in your um, materials. Are there any questions about this item? Is there any public comment?
No public comment at this time.
Okay, then I'm going to move adoption of the proclamation, approval of the proclamation.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous four zero. Uh, we're on to item fourteen B, okay. Email from trustee Jim Fitzsimmons resigning as often in the contra Costa. Mosquito and Vector Control District. Now, as you see from his letter, he has served seventeen years as Lafayette's representative. As you, you may know, the uh, the vector control, it's not a county, it's, it's a countywide organization, but it's not a county uh, board. It's an independent board. And its Board of Directors uh, has one representative from each city. And Jim has been our representative for seventeen years. Uh, Jim was very active in homeowners' associations and uh, in land use matters. Uh, and when this position became available, he took an interest in it and volunteered. And he's just been a tremendous uh, representative for the city. It's just, but uh, unfortunately, um, he's not able to continue. So um, we'll accept the resignation with regret and thank him. I'd like to do something more for him. We'll, we can talk about that, whether some more tangible. Can be, well, anyway, other comments?
No, I would support something more tangible. I mean, we, the resolution and something meaningful as well, so. Thank you, and thank you for that nice uh, tribute to him, Mayor.
So, yeah, thank you. Totally agree. Let's definitely do something for, for Jim. Um, what is the process for getting the next person?
We will place an ad and we would hope that you would all ask your friends and neighbors
Okay.
if they're interested in serving on the Vector Control Board. It's an application process. And uh, we've, we will provide them with the application and uh, send it forward. We make a recommendation at your level and then it goes to them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Nope, okay. All right, I don't think we need a motion for, yeah, okay. And on to item C, uh, Erin Partridge resigning from the Senior Services Commission. Again, you're someone who's made a real contribution in the years that she's been on the commission, so.
Yeah, I would just like to add that um, Erin had, has um, was facilitating during the um the AARP um, city, you know, all the conversations and everything that took place and uh, jumped in, you know, just very enthusiastically, um, participated and led the um, worked with Terry Black on the rocks, painting the rocks at the first community day and um I know it's always very hard when we have these amazing volunteers um, step aside, but do want to thank her for her service.
Okay, any public comment on this item?
No, no comment.
Okay, so again, we, we accept the resignation and we thank Erin for all of her service. And that brings us unbelievably
Yeah.
To adjournment, I just, can't we just, you know, okay, all right, well I don't know what, I don't know what to do. I, I, I can't just have yeah. All right, the meeting's adjourned at um, eight eleven. Oh.
I, I'll make it eight twelve. You had reminded me, Mayor, and I should have raised my hand that we are going to be adjourning in memory of those who lost their lives uh, twenty-two years ago.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. We are adjourned.